We are now on item number 16. This is a public hearing on a possi... It's a hearing to consider an appeal of the Planning Commission's approval of a request from Jeff Frame, property owners Mark Turner and Sean Richards for a special use permit to allow multifamily apartments in a retail commercial zoning district on property zone retail commercial planned unit development located on GS Richards Boulevard and Country Club Drive. So this is an appeal, and I've talked to the district attorney, and I want everybody to listen kind of closely because this is kind of how the outline is going to go tonight, okay? First of all, I think it's important to remember that this is what's called a quasi-judicial hearing where the board hears evidence on appeal, on this appeal. Under Carson City Municipal Code 18.02.060 subsection 2, the board, that's us, may affirm, modify, or reverse the decision of the Planning Commission. The decision of this board is final, and an appeal from this board goes to District Court. Pursuant to Carson City Municipal Code 18.02.0604 subsection 4B reads as follows: Issues not addressed in the public hearing stage of the administrative process for a project which is being appealed may not be raised as a basis for the appeal unless there is substantial new evidence which has become available accompanied by proof that the evidence was not available at the time of the public hearing. If new information is submitted to the board, the application shall be referred back to the commission for further appeal, review, and action. Okay, that's the standard of what happens. So basically, we are on the record that came to us up from the Planning Commission or what was reasonably anticipated into the Planning Commission. What was presented? On the procedure for tonight, I'm going to ask the staff to set forth the procedural background of this matter, and then I'm going to ask the appellants to make their case, the applicants then to make their argument, and then a rebuttal by the appellants, then questions from the board. I mean, we can question at any time, but either during the presentations or after, and then when that's done, we will bring it back here to see if we can reach a decision. So everybody clear on that process? Okay. And there will be no public comment on this issue tonight. There's public comment at the end of the meeting, but on this one, since it's quasi-judicial and the rights of parties are involved, it's unfair to have additional public comment on one side or the other. This is an appeal on the record between the appellant and the applicants. As we get ready to go, I've made some thoughts that you might want to consider in your presentations tonight. And by the way, let me go back and say that there's no time limit that I wish to put on, and I don't know if the rest of the board does. We're here to listen, to hear, to make sure that everybody has a full opportunity to make their presentations, and if we're here a long time, we're here a long time. All I ask is that, one, is that we stay on point, stay on the issues, not be personal in our presentations, and try not to be duplicative of one another. So with that in mind, some of the thoughts that I had that you might want to consider in your presentations are as follows. One of the issues before the Planning Commission was whether this project qualifies for the special use permitting process or must only be considered through a PUD amendment. You will note that there is an opinion of the district attorney in the record that finds the special use process applicable and appropriate. You might want to address whether you find that opinion persuasive or not. Two, in looking at the comments in the record, it seems as though there is a fair amount of reliance on what the parties intended back in 1980, 1993, or thereabouts. This also relates to the issue of the appropriate planning process. If your presentation relies on what you believe to be the intent of the parties, it would be helpful if you could also point to the provision or lack thereof in the original PUD application, PUD ordinance, development agreement, CCNRs, or other document that supports such statement of intent. Three, what authority does either the Planning Commission or this board have with respect to architectural design issues relating to the proposed apartment complex? Four, the staff has provided its analysis of the issues raised by the appellant. For the appellant, you might want to address whether the staff analysis is correct or incorrect. It's a pretty good little roadmap of what, where they see the issues. And the last one is, what authority, if any, does the board, this board, have to make adjustments in the PUD density allocation as a result of any determination regarding this project during our deliberations? Those are suggestions only. You don't have to abide by them if you don't want to. But as I look through what's here, I think if you talk to those, at least from my standpoint, that would give me a pretty good idea of how to resolve, you know, internally, how to make a decision on this matter. So with that in mind, I'm going to ask the staff now to give us a little history, not a little, but whatever history is appropriate, not just the history period. So go. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Dorpansky, go.
For the record, Susan Dorpansky, Planning Manager. The applicant of this project is requesting a 90-unit apartment complex on approximately four acres, just above four acres, on the northwest corner of Country Club Drive and GS Richards Boulevard. This apartment complex is going to consist of five buildings, three stories each, with a clubhouse, 50 one-bedroom units, 42-bedroom units, open space and recreational facilities, as well as one-car garages on the first floor of the five main structures. This is the proposed site plan that I have up on the screen now, showing their various parking areas, open space, the building footprints, the clubhouse, and the private recreation pool and playground area on the site. The next slide is the elevations that are proposed by the applicant currently. It shows porches and patios on all of the residential units, as well as the one-car garages below. I'll note that the one-car garages don't cover every unit, but they do cover a significant number of the units, and again, three stories high. And then the elevations of the proposed clubhouse is a part of this project. I'm going to go back to this slide. This is the slide I'm going to end on, but I'm going to talk a little bit about what was approved and how the procedure worked. The Planning Commission heard this item on September 30th, and they heard a special use permit for the allowance of a residential use in the retail commercial zoning district as allowed by Carson City Municipal Code. Staff at the time had determined that a special use permit was appropriate based on, number one, previous special use permits that had been granted in the underlying zoning district of the PUD throughout the life of the PUD up to this point, as well as the fact that through extensive research, staff didn't find anything in the PUD approval or subsequent documents to indicate that the retail commercial district uses were restricted in any way, either in what is currently allowed by right or by special use permit. At the Planning Commission meeting, the Planning Commission members heard extensive testimony, both in opposition and in favor of the project. Concerns by the opposition that were raised included whether the appropriate mechanism was a special use permit versus an amendment to the PUD, density of the project, and potential impacts that would result as a result of that density, as well as the architecture of the project and whether it was compatible. The Planning Commission ultimately voted to approve the special use permit by a vote of five to two. After the meeting, an appeal was subsequently received by two adjacent property owners that live in this building here, Richard and Brenda Whipley and Robert and Pamela Botter. The appeal letter cited essentially the same concerns that both of them, both of those parties brought up during the Planning Commission meeting. In addition to their appeal letter, and including their attachment written by Steve Hartman, several letters and emails, both in opposition and in support of the project, have come into planning staff's possession throughout this process. They've all been provided either as a part of the original packet or as late material up to as late as about 4 o'clock today. Of those opposition letters, I'd like to note, if you didn't note it in the packet, that six, I believe, had either called or written to retract their opposition upon learning more about the project. Today's staff is recommending that the board deny the appeal and uphold the Planning Commission's approval for the special use permit. To deny the appeal and uphold the special use permit, the board would need to agree with the findings that staff and the Planning Commission made through the special use permit process. To uphold the appeal and deny the special use permit, the board would need to make specific findings for denial based on the required special use permit findings that are outlined in the staff report. And then the board also has the option to modify the approval, which could be the addition of conditions, the deletion of conditions, or the modification of the project overall. That concludes my presentation. Planning staff, the district attorney, and the engineering staff are all here to answer questions if you have them.
Any questions? Go.
If I may, you said the, this property here is appealed, the property owners of that particular property appealed, or make the appeal. How is this property zoned, and what is that property?
The zoning on that property is retail commercial PUD, so it's retail commercial with the planned unit development designation behind it because it's located within the Silver Oak PUD. The uses on that parcel, I believe, are offices and two residential units.
And the definition, as you read them out loud, do we have, is there any way we can get a copy of that so we can have that of what, the definition of how we appeal or uphold this ruling, the statements you just read?
Sure.
Can we get a copy of that before we have to make the determination?
Yeah, it's just part of my script, but yes.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions, staff? I don't see any. Okay. Who's going to do what for the appellant? Anybody want to go forward? Okay. Yeah, Brenda, come on up. Hi.
Hi. I'm going to read this, okay?
That's okay.
Good evening, Mayor Crowell and the Board of Supervisors. My name is Brenda Whipley. I'm one of the property owners within the Silver Oak Commercial Village along with Richard Whipley, Robert Botter, and Pamela Botter. We have appealed the Planning Commission decision that was given September 30th, 2015, to grant a special use permit to construct a 90-unit residential complex on GS Richards Boulevard adjacent to Ivy Baldwin Circle. I would like to read this short introduction letter from the four of us. Honestly, none of the four of us have extensive experience with PUDs, but we have learned a lot about them in the last few months. The four of us purchased lot number three many years ago in the Silver Oak PUD. Our parcel is in the Commercial Village. When we made our purchase, we received not only a deed but a set of CCNRs stating the uses and guidelines for our particular lot. Part of our reason for purchasing this property was the fact that it was in a planned unit development. The entire development was laid out and, in our opinion, was very attractive. The PUD consisted of approximately 651 acres. Extensive planning had gone into this project to allow for about 45% open space with the golf course. There would be 1,181 residential units, our Commercial Village, and a larger commercial site. Many allowances were made to accommodate these numbers in an attractive and well-developed plan by integrating narrower streets with sidewalks on only one side, more dense clustered housing buffered by the golf course, and thoughtfully planned single-family residential units. We like the fact that this is a PUD, I gotta, let me go again, we like the fact that this PUD had its master plan already laid out. The PUD was the master plan. We chose to construct a mixed-use building on our property. This was an allowable use with a special use permit within the Commercial Village as long as the building was predominantly retail commercial, which ours is. We have rental space for offices on the first and second floors and two residential apartments occupying the third floor. We followed the guidelines set forth in the CCNRs in design and land coverage. This Commercial Village is not part of the city master plan. This PUD is its own master plan. We felt confident in investing our time and our money in a quality project, knowing that we would be surrounded by similar projects. It was quite a surprise to the four of us when we received a notice from the Carson City Planning Department that a proposal for a 90-unit multifamily residential complex was on the agenda for the September 30th meeting. Even more surprising to us was a staff recommendation that a special use permit be approved. My husband, Richard, made an appointment at that time with a member of the planning staff to discuss this item. He learned at this meeting that the Silver Oak PUD that we had bought into was no longer relevant and now instead governed by the city master plan. Our first thought is, where did our planned unit development go? Since our attendance at that Planning Commission meeting, we have discovered some facts that we believe shows our Silver Oak PUD does in fact exist, and it remains relevant. First, Silver Oak PUD had an allowable 1,181 residential units, which was increased in 1995 through an amendment of the PUD for a total of 1,205 residential units. More than 50% have been built. The residential units are site-specific within the master plan of the PUD. In 2004, the Carson Tahoe Hospital came before the Planning Commission and the Board of Supervisors in conjunction with the Silver Oak PUD to amend the PUD. The hospital wished to purchase 7.73 acres at the north end of the PUD to construct what is now the Carson Regional Medical Center. The Silver Oak PUD had designated that property for 30 single-family residential units in low residential density. In this amendment, which was approved, Silver Oak PUD gave up those 33, 33, 30 residential units. They could not be transferred within the PUD, but they were abandoned. This reinforced the fact that residential units are site-specific. If in fact this residential complex is approved, then 90 units must be deducted from the total 1,175 units, leaving 1,085 for the entirety of the PUD. The PUD is a singular, compatible, complementary entity. Its Commercial Village, its clustered residences, and its single-family residences are all part of this total number with common design themes and specific uses within specific villages and clusters within the PUD. For this foregoing reason alone, the PUD would need to be amended if multifamily residential complexes are desired land use. Somewhere within our existing PUD, 90 single-family undeveloped residential lots will need to be abandoned. Where they will come from will need to be worked out. The amendment proposal will need to specify which lots are to be abandoned for future development. The result will be that there will be only 1,085 total allowable residential units within this planned community. If the board still believes that a special use permit is the appropriate procedure, we do not believe there was sufficient evidence before the Planning Commission to support a special use permit. The impact to the immediate vicinity is significant. The traffic generated by this proposal during peak day periods will create a massive impact to the entry of the golf course clubhouse and Dr. Schallenberger's office, as well as the traffic circle which is not sized to handle this level of traffic. When you read the Silver Oak PUD, there is nothing about this proposed residential complex that supports the goals and objectives of the Silver Oak PUD or the neighborhood, and no evidence was presented to the contrary. The proposed use impacts our properties and the ability of our guests, customers, patients, and patrons to access our property and the property of others. If you have visited the site, you can understand the impact of traffic on this undersized street and roundabout. We have made significant investments based upon expectations that the community represented would be cohesive and a compatible series of land use would remain. This is not what is proposed in this application. We are appealing based on the fact that this proposed complex does not meet with the design guidelines set forth in our PUD. The design theme of the entire PUD was to be French country, English cottage, craftsman, and prairie style with allowed interpretation. Our CCNRs also stated that the buildings and parkings can only cover a maximum of 60 to 70% of the land. This proposed complex is not compatible, in our opinion, with the surrounding developed properties nor in compliance with the design guidelines. We are supposed to have a Silver Oak Commercial Association. In the 10 years that I have lived in the Commercial Village, none of the four of us have ever been notified or in any way contacted about meetings. The laws of the state of Nevada are very specific in regards to property owner associations. Property owners must be contacted and informed. Within this property owners association, there would be an architectural review committee that would have overseen and made sure that the design guidelines were adhered to. We are now in the process of finding out more about this property owners association for our village. We know that we have never received any notices, and it is the same for other property owners in our village. We receive a quarterly billing for common area maintenance fees, but never any other type of notifications. I have been told that an association does exist and does meet. I have called and requested copies of the minutes, and I finally received copies last Tuesday for some of the years. I have been told that there is a board of directors, and the two applicants for this project are on that board. We are in the process of hiring legal counsel to advise some of us property owners to ensure that we have representation in our association. This is an ongoing project that we're working on now. I would also like to advise all of you for the record that on Saturday, Mark Turner did text and offer to meet at Starbucks with my husband, Richard Whipley, about paint colors for the proposed complex. We did thank Mark for extending this offer. Unfortunately, this and other design, landscaping, and architectural questions are questions within the design guidelines of the PUD, and the meeting must be with the property owners association's design committee, not with Richard. We are also appealing this decision since multifamily residential complexes are not in acceptable use within the RC-PUD zoning of the Commercial Village. Again, I will stress that the Silver Oak Planned Unit Development is its own master plan and is excluded from the city master plan. Changes can be made within the PUD by amending the PUD and the development agreement as has been done previously. The four of us are not opposed to change, but we insist that it must be done correctly to preserve the future of our PUD and our property values. We also realize that what was planned 20 years ago with his PUD may need to be tweaked to fit the marketplace of today. We think one big change is the desire of many people to live in apartments, townhouses, and condos. Unfortunately, the Silver Oak Planned Unit Development, as it is structured now, does not accommodate this multifamily residential complex at this site. That intensity was planned for the Silver Oak cluster areas. We appreciate your time, and we know that you've had a busy day with your long agenda, and we appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Brenda. Okay. And anybody else going to be speaking on behalf of the appellant?
Yes.
Okay, go. Okay.
Thank you.
What I've been handed here is, so everybody knows what I've got here.
Oh. It's just a copy of the letter I'm going to read to you.
Okay, all right. That's fine.
And some signatures of other property owners that did, have never received notice, either from the Planning Commission, from the applicant, or from the Silver Oak Association. Is it on?
Yeah.
Push the button.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor Crowell and the Board of Supervisors.
Do you have a copy of this? Does the applicant have a copy of this? Please get a copy. Go ahead, I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you.
Good evening. My name is Judy Schallenberger, and Dr. Schallenberger and I have owned the property at 1231 Country Club Drive in the Silver Oak Commercial Village for eight and a half years. We have appealed the Planning Commission's decision that was given on September 30th of 2015 to grant a special use permit to construct a 90-unit residential complex on GS Richards Boulevard directly across the street from our medical complex. I have sent a letter to each member of the board addressing our reasons for objecting to this development.
Hang on a second, Mrs. Schallenberger. Are you, were you part of the, did you file an appeal?
I only, I was never notified of this. So literally, two hours before the Planning Commission made their decision, I talked to Ms. Dorpansky, and I faxed a letter to her. I didn't ever receive it. I learned it from the Whipleys at the last minute.
Right, I got you, but did you file an appeal?
I just sent her a letter. I don't know if that's accepted as an appeal. Yes, it was an appeal. It was an appeal.
I did receive the letter, yes, but it was not a formal appeal under our provisions.
Well, since I did not get any notice from the Planning Commission, how would I know what the process was?
The Planning, Mrs. Schallenberger submitted a letter to the Planning Commission for their consideration, as well as a letter for you to consider as a part of this appeal.
This doesn't look like it's, it doesn't look like there's a, she's filed the appeal to be an appellant, okay? Are there others that are going to be testifying in the same position?
No, I think that she was confused. She didn't get any kind of letters or anything about this. She did not file a...
Come on up, Brenda, please. Come on up.
Actually, Judy was out of town when we did the appeal, but it was just the four of us that appealed, but she is in opposition to it as well, and she's...
Well, I understand, but I mean, but that's why I read at the beginning, Brenda, is that, you know, we've got, we've got an appellant, and we've got, you know, an applicant here. And I don't, you know, if they didn't appeal, then they're really not, you know, it's not appropriate for us to hear it right now.
Is she not part of my group? In my letter, I talked about the association, and she has more detailed information about the association.
As I understand it, the appeal was filed by you and the four.
Right, it was.
The Botters and the Whipleys.
Right.
But nobody else.
That is true.
Okay.
You're correct. Heard, I think what Judy is just talking, going to talk about was something that I had brought up, and that was about the lack of notification and participation in our members association.
Okay, the other question is, was this brought up in front of the Planning Commission?
I tried, we tried to bring everything up in the whole wide world at that Planning Commission.
I couldn't hear you.
I don't know, I can't remember if, I don't know if it was or not. I mean, I have to say, I would say no, because we didn't really realize we even had a homeowners association until after the meeting. It's kind of took us by surprise, you know? And we, after the meeting, we found out, and I made some phone calls, as I said in my, in my letter, about this association, and now we're finding more out.
Okay.
So this may not be appropriate, is what you're telling me?
That's what I'm, that's what I'm saying. And I, you know, I'm, I understand that you're going to, you know, you say, hey, I'm here, I want to, I want to speak, but there are rights, this is quasi-judicial, it's not just a public hearing. There are rights and liabilities attached with this application, so, you know, not only do we have to look out for what your rights are, but what the applicant's rights are. So I'm going to, I'm going to tell you, Mrs. Schallenberger, that it's not appropriate because you're not an appellant in this, in this case, okay? But, okay.
I understand.
We understand.
But I also say it's not, was not appropriate and in violation.
Microphone.
It wasn't appropriate, and it was in violation of regulation, that as property owners and members of the Silver Oak Association, Commercial Association, we were not informed by the Planning Department. They have an obligation to do that. I was not informed by the applicant.
Informed of what?
Of a special use meeting coming up, that they were going to put a 90-unit building right across the street from us.
Okay, I got you, all right.
Not, not from them, from the Planning Commission.
I thought you were...
Not from the applicant, not from the association.
Okay.
Mayor Crowell, since I'm the applicant, would I be able to read Judy's letter?
Well, here's, if it was presented in front of the Planning Commission, you sure can. But if it's new stuff, Brenda, then, you know, then, that's why I read that at the beginning.
I, I know.
If it's new, I've got to then, you know, go through another drill, and then you've got to, you know, tell me, okay, it's new, why wasn't it presented then? Did you have a chance to do it? And all that, that's why I'm trying to, that's why at the beginning of this, I kind of gave some, a little roadmap of where, you know, how we can narrow this down, because we, you know, it's, believe me, these decisions up here, and you folks know, I think everybody in this room knows how difficult these decisions are. I mean, because everybody in this room knows probably everybody in this room. They're not easy. And so, all I can say, you know, is try to run a meeting where, you know, we comply with the municipal code on how these meetings get done, and... with the municipal code on how these meetings get done, and do it as a fair way we can, so everybody gets an opportunity to say it, but, but I can't, I can't use that to run over the rights of the other side, so that's what I'm saying.
We completely understand.
Okay, all right, all right.
We can understand, and thank you.
Thanks, thanks, Brenda.
But I do have, I do have a couple more.
Sure, go ahead.
Michael, Mike.
Go ahead.
Mike.
Mayor, could you clarify for the record, did you make a determination whether or not that exhibit is accepted?
Not accepted.
Thank you.
Mayor Crowell, could we have a 10-minute recess, please?
Sure.
We have to kind of just regroup.
Sure, no problem.
Thank you.
Fine. Okay, we'll be in recess for 10 minutes. Okay. Reconvene the Board of Supervisors meeting. Mr. Hartman, go. I, I'm sorry, we're going to reconvene the Board of Supervisors meeting. We see Mr. Steve Hartman at the table. Go, Steve.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the board. I do know how long these days are, and I appreciate you guys making the effort to do this. I will confine my remarks to the remarks I made in the Planning Commission that deal with the historical piece of the puzzle here. And I will do my best, Mr. Mayor, to address the issues that you suggested in your outline as you began this meeting. In July of 93, we submitted a pretty comprehensive mass plan amendment and land use change for a planned unit development. I can't begin to tell you how many pages that is, but it was a bunch, and that application set forth the plan for the physical boundaries, basically the real estate that was involved, and what the attributes were, everything from soils to slope. It basically looked at the character and characterization of the land and whether it was appropriate for development, and those were in summary form in the application. And the language that was in that part of the application essentially talked about the fact that you had 651 acres, and that the change of land use was going to reflect a variety of changes from various mass plan categories, essentially to an overall density of single-family 12,000 PUD. The reason for that was when we did a calculation, and there is in the application, and by the way, so you know, all of the application was incorporated by reference in the ordinance which approved the PUD, and in the decision, which subsequently was the second reading of the ordinance that approved the PUD.
I think we've got the application, and so, and I suspect, I suspect we've all read it, all right?
This is the original application.
Right, the original application, right.
Yeah, it was a little difficult, because when I first went over and saw Susan, they had, didn't have that application, and having been a few years and a couple of moves, I, it took me a while to accumulate that pile of paper again.
We've got, we've got it, and I, I for one have read it.
Okay.
A couple times.
Good. That is comforting. Not a lot of folks did. In the summaries, one of them was, I think, pretty specific, not hard to read, dealt with all the acreage of the site, 683 acres, went through the various uses, from open space, golf course, and then went through the land use data, and compared all of that data in terms of what the gross acreage was, the potential dwelling units, the potential population that could be generated from that. And at the end of the day, we made a statement in that application that we believed that having a density that approached 1,500 units was too much, given the physical characteristics of the property and our community as, in its entirety.
Is that in the application?
That is in the application, yes.
All right.
Do you want me to?
Yeah.
Tie you into that? As I said, you're going to have to bear with me, because it took me a while to find all these bits and pieces.
I think it's page 32.
Boy, that's good.
We all read it, Steve.
You got it? Good. Okay, then I won't worry about it, as long as you found it. And as you know, we had a number of requests for variances that related from everything, from lot setbacks to height to sidewalks on one side of the street, width of streets, to deal with the various characteristics of the, of the types of development. And the reason for that was because it fits within the PUD. It fits within a planned unit development. This is not a 278 subdivision. And the adoption of both of those ordinances, the ordinances, the first reading, the ordinance the second reading, which had the notice of decision, make that clear, that it's the adoption of the PUD, and you had to live, and there were going to be notes on the maps, that you had to live with the PUD and the application. The analysis that we did was really to keep a large chunk of open space, and I think that the project did that. I think it's done it today. Some of that was forced upon us by topography, but the rest of it was a function of the golf course, which was something the community wanted. And the other thing was the way we laid out the units. There was, and I indicated in my most recent letter to you, Mr. Mayor, and to all of you, there was never, ever, ever a discussion of apartments, not once. And the reason behind that was that the project that was attempted to be developed on the Hortunian Project, before we became involved with it, was a large apartment complex that was essentially where Sierra Place would be today. It was generally in that area, in terms of the project layout, and that room that's to the east here was full of people, and they weren't happy, and that project died. So, the representation that was made to the Planning Commission, that this was considered at the beginning, that, that's not true. That's simply false.
So I understand it, Steve. Maybe I'm misunderstanding what's going on here. I, the representation was the other way around, that multifamily is not precluded as a special, as a, as a special use in retail, commercial PUD.
No, no, I, I, you don't see that in a PUD. The P, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, but the PUD is driven by the documents that create it. It's driven by the application, it's driven by the CCNRs, it's driven by that approval. There is not anything that was ever mentioned in that approval process that dealt with multifamily units.
Yeah, well, okay, I got you there, I got you. But the other side of that coin is this, is there a prohibition against it?
No, but there doesn't have to be. If you look, when, when you make a representation, as this project did to the community, that this was going to be the product, this was going to be an 1181, whatever the number was, I, there's, there's too many numbers in the deal, but whatever that was, that representation was, it was going to be that way, and it was going to be built this way, and it would have this look. If you'll remember, this community had just gone through a visioning study, and we spent a lot of time as a community going through that visioning study, and it was well received by the community. We, it's always been hard in the planning world to write something down and say, well, do you think this will look good? Because people can't visualize it. So when we brought those guys in, I think we got a really good representation of what folks wanted their community to look like. Our design guidelines were driven by that study. That was a big piece of, of why we did what we did. And no, the density issue was driven because we wanted to keep the higher intensity uses surrounded by golf course. That's why they are where they are. If you take a look at the matrix and the pieces of it, it, it never talks about apartments, it never talks about multifamily. It talks about cluster homes, zero-lot line homes, common wall homes, townhomes, but it never talks about multifamily in the sense that you've got a rental apartment. Nowhere. It's not in here. Nowhere to be found in any of the documents that created the Silver Oak PUD.
Does, does the governing documents for the Silver Oak PUD, is it intended to limit uses otherwise permitted by Carson City?
Well, I think, I think if you take a look at it, I think the language that we used was accessory and compatible thereto. And when I think back to some of the ones that we did, you know, we, we had a special use permit for the temporary clubhouse, because it was accessory. I mean, we, we didn't want to build it, we didn't, it was inappropriate at that time to spend that kind of money at that location, so we asked for that, and we were able to bring a mobile in, if you will, it was a, like a construction trailer, and, but we went through the process. You know, we came through the process, and whenever there was a major, like the addition of those additional units in 95 or whenever it was, we also made changes in the, the variances. We had been a little too tough on ourselves in terms of what we thought we could get in terms of the geometry, and so we didn't do that. It wasn't working, we came back, we went through an amendment, we went through an amendment of the, the development agreement and the PUD to change that.
The CCNR, Steve, let me go back to the uses a minute. At page 32 of the CCNRs under permitted land uses say, the last sentence says, "It is not the intent of this declaration to exclude any uses allowable pursuant to current Carson City ordinance." What is that intended to mean?
Can I, let me get that. It's on, which one now? Are you timing out the design guy?
Page 32 of the CCNRs.
You know, there's two sets of CCNRs, just so you know.
It's a reciprocal easements and covenants, April 8th, 1998. Actually, I guess page three of that document, I'm looking, I've got a lot of numbers here, page three of it. Yeah, it reads as follows. Article 1, 1.1, permitted land uses. "The allowable land uses for the Exhibit A property shall be a set forth in the Carson City Municipal Code as modified by the Silver Oak Development Agreement. While subsequent deed restrictions may exclude certain uses otherwise available by law, it is not the intent of this declaration to exclude any uses allowable pursuant to current Carson City ordinance." And my question is, what is, what is that? I mean, to, to me, what that says is, is that you're incorporating, or not you, but I mean, the, that the area is designed to, to not preclude any use that's otherwise permitted under Carson City ordinance. City ordinance. Maybe I missed reading that.
Well, I think, I think you have... You got them, so they go off automatically now? That's a good idea. From days gone by.
No, I got it up here, Steve.
Oh, do you? Oh, sorry. You know, they wouldn't give me one of those when I was running that position, so. You know, I, I had a conversation with Juan, and I had a conversation with Walt relative to the planning, the planning piece of this. And one of the things that you have a luxury of right now, although my personal belief is you've misapplied it when you applied it to the 160 acres in the Silver Oak area, of having a mixed-use zone. It was the mixed-use zone which was the neo-traditional thing we were looking for in, in the commercial area. And then it didn't exist, we didn't have it. So we had, we were stuck with these traditional zone districts, but they were always with the PUD. And in my view is, and I stated this at the planning commission, you, you can't take a conditional use out of the potpourri that's there and essentially rezone that retail commercial PUD to a, a zone that was never discussed, a, a zone that was never dealt with in its entirety, because it amounts to a spot zoning. You've essentially, basically just gone against everything you did in the PUD, which was try and have a cohesive, compatible design in, in your project. So I think they're, they're accessory. I think that if you've got the situation where you have a, a retail process, you have a restaurant, and you have residential, it's like I said down to the planning commission, I think there's a way to do this project and do it right, but it can't be the only use there. It just can't. You, you're gonna violate the entirety of the, of the concept of the planned unit development. And the flip side of it is, you gotta deal with the density issue. That density issue is very specific. So there was a time when we were trying to figure out a way, because of the geometry of fitting units in these cluster areas, of how can you move those densities between cluster areas? But it was never beyond cluster areas, it was always within cluster areas. And that, I think, went in to the planning staff somewhere along the way, and they said, no, that's your number. So that's my, that's my view of that from a, from a pure planning standpoint, from a land use standpoint, from a PUD standpoint. I think under 278A, and that's the governing statute, it's not 278, you gotta deal with what is a little more amorphous kind of document. Because to the degree you tie, start tying it down to very specific things, you might as well have a subdivision.
Steve, walk me through your argument of how the PUD zoning and the intent of the mixed-use commercial applies to each specific parcel and not the PUD area or the commercial village overall. Because when I read this, my interpretation would be that the mixed uses are allowed within the commercial, the village, within the commercial village, and you could have a single use on a parcel, but the overall village is designed to have multiple uses within the village. So walk me through your argument on why that would not be accurate.
Ah, so you do have control.
We're kidding each other here, so if anybody out there in the audience thinks that I'm shutting him off, I'm not, but, okay, go.
The reason, Supervisor, is that you, if you do that, you're, you're violating the zone. In other words, you have to have a retail piece, and you gotta have a commercial piece. And you can have something else that's conditional, but you have to have those two pieces in the mix. It has to be mixed use. It's not like we're taking this whole bucket and, you know, all the green stuff goes over there, and all the red stuff goes over there, and all the blue stuff goes, and that's not what that's about. What you're trying to do is create that within the, within that property. So they all have that characteristic. And again, it goes back to the neo-traditional stuff. When, when you, when planning began in the, in New England way back when, it was always typically around the town square. And around the town square, you had the restaurant and the shoe shop and all that, and above that, somebody lived, or there was an office, and above that, they lived. Those were the, the old traditional design standards around cores, the commercial village, if you will. That's what you tried to do in that, that's what we were trying to do in that. So we didn't have all the vehicles. You, you, you know, you guys have an opportunity in the downtown now to do that because you have a mixed-use zone. I noticed in some of my many readings, and I do sympathize, I really do, with all the reading you guys have had to do, that somehow there's a mixed-use zone that applies to the, to the Silver Oak PUD. It can't. There's a PUD there, you, you have to go through and amend the PUD to do that. You don't get...
But the, the Botters and the Whifleys didn't do that.
Excuse me?
They used a special use permit for...
They did do that.
To go mixed use, so maybe I, maybe I misunderstood what you're saying.
No, 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 you, no, they absolutely did that. And you absolutely, or your predecessor proved that. And what did you have there? You had a retail, commercial, residential, you have all those uses. It's an accessory, it's compatible. There's nothing wrong with that. Nothing at all wrong with it. That's what, that's what was intended. That's what you want to see in a, in a PUD commercial setting.
Even though mixed use, I, I think I understood your letter to say, mixed use was not contemplated in 1993.
No, it, no, it was contemplated, it didn't exist here. We didn't have it.
Well, it didn't exist, right.
No, no, it existed elsewhere.
Elsewhere, but not here.
No, we didn't have it here, so we used, we used the PUD because the PUD piece of this is the most important piece. Otherwise, it'd just be another subdivision. It'd just be like anything else. And you could just throw all the density on there you wanted, based on your normal master plan. But the master plan in Silver Oak is the PUD. It's a carve-out. It says, we're gonna govern here.
Okay.
So there was some other thing in here. You, you've read your stuff, I'm really impressed.
Go ahead, go.
You didn't go to the legislature today, and that's, that's why you're doing this, I know.
Steve, can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am.
So when I, try and help me understand, when I read the PUD, there are exceptions that you put in as variances to the Carson City Municipal Code. They're very specific in here. At the time that the PUD was in existence, the retail commercial Carson City Municipal Code allowed a special use permit that would include multifamily, bunch of other stuff, recreational vehicle parks, et cetera.
Right.
So my, my question becomes, when I read through the document, help me understand where the PUD excluded that use that was allowable by the code at the time that you did this, since you so eloquently did it throughout all the other variances? And I guess that's, where is it?
Well, the variance, the, the, all of those variances, the ones I talked about that we subsequently came in and modified a bunch of them in 95, we, we, we were fortunate enough to have a, a land planner who was also an architect, who was also a landscape architect, that gave us a lot of guidance. And trust me, if you're ever in the land planning business, that's the kind of guy you want. And what we were trying to do was deal with a lot of the variances in the practical construction site, building setbacks to back lots, front, depth of driveway, sidewalk on one side, not on the other, widened sidewalk throughout the community as a, a way to access open areas. So our focus was really on, on the nuts and bolts of that. We really believe that when you looked at the design guidelines, and when you looked at the CCNRs, that was the vision of the PUD, and it's all there. The mayor asked, is that an appropriate place to go? I don't think so. I think the design guidelines and the CCNRs, although I will tell you, and Jason will love to hear this one, one of the requirements at the time was that the DA's office had to approve the CCNRs. And, and they did. But that's not normal. You don't normally do that. And I, and I don't think it's appropriate for the city to enforce those. I do think it's appropriate to deal with the Architectural Review Committee. There was a provision that we made in the documents that said that the, because we didn't want the planning commission, or, excuse me, the planning department to be stuck going, well, this hasn't got a stamp on it, you know, what are we gonna do? So that they only had to look at the prima facie, here's the stamp, if it's got a stamp on it, it's been approved by the Architecture Review Committee for Silver Oak. And that provision was placed in that document. Now, I think that there's a lot of issues that's been raised by some of the members about the issues of whether or not they've been notified and included. There's very specific provisions in the CCNRs about, you know, after whatever, some percentage of the property is sold, you have to bring everybody else in. This isn't a private, a little club that you get to run. You, you have all the owners, and they've all invested a lot of money in that. So that, but that's not an issue for you, in my opinion. That's just my opinion. But I think it's an issue for somebody, and they probably have a black dress. So, just a thought.
Okay, Steve, I've read this too.
God, isn't it great? You know, I never thought anybody would really read all this.
Great reading.
Yeah.
In the original application, on the first page, it says, and explain to me the thought process behind this. "The project utilizes the planned unit development, PUD form of development, to provide as much flexibility and creativity as is reasonably necessary, and yet show with a high level of certainty the anticipated final plan layout." So in that flexibility, are not all uses allowed. That's, that's the first question. And the second question is, who is the Architectural Review Committee, and did everybody in the village go through that process in the commercial section?
I don't know who the Architectural Review Committee is. I'm, I'm told that it's Mark and Sean. I don't know that to be a fact, but it's, one exists, I think, one needs to exist because there's been a lot of stuff built. And I assume somebody's been stamping stuff, so, for the planning commission purposes, not planning department purposes. The, the question of whether all uses are allowed, I don't think so. I know, that was never, I mean, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have a mobile home park in a, in that project. I, I don't think it was ever envisioned that. I, I think the bigger, the bigger kind of question that I think is at the core is, could you take a conditional use and make it the use? Because that's the antithesis of what was done in the layout. I mean, all you have to do is look at it, and then look through this document, and you won't see any mention ever of multifamily. That doesn't mean that you couldn't have some condo or town home worked in with it. I, I'm not saying that at all. I think that, that functionally is where you want to go in the commercial village. And I think you're finding it in the downtown area, Reno's found it in the downtown, you need that synergism of full-time living, they can go and patronize the projects down there, and you guys are doing that, and I think that's a good idea. That's, we were way out in front and ran into a big recession. But I think the plan was, was viable, I think it's still viable. And I, and I think, I'm not against what the guys are trying to do in terms of having multifamily. I, I would prefer to see condos, and I think I said that at the planning commission. I, I believe that product is in demand. But I also believe that that demand is moving like a freight train through here right now because of all the activity that's around us. And then it'll be here, and then it'll be gone. And so at the end of the day, you want the project to survive and be viable for the future. That, that's kind of what you try to do with PUDs, you want to look at the bigger, the bigger sense of things. I, I, I'm not a big subdivision fan, hammer, have men, and, because I think at the end of the day, they all deteriorate and end up being a mess. But, anyway.
Steve, Steve, does the, is a hotel comple, hotel casino complex still permitted in the PUD?
Yes, it was.
And where, where would that be located?
That was on, I don't remember the designation, but it was up at the, at the corner of Eagle Valley Road and 395. There was a change made in that zone to accommodate, I think, some of the thoughts that the folks that owned that had in terms of how they might want to do that development. The other place that my recollection serves me, and don't hold me to it, because I got a lot of white hair, was at the clubhouse. There was always envisioned to be a small, limited license kind of concept at the clubhouse. And I think that had a TC zone. The, the property that's the subject of this was envisioned at that time to be kind of a boutique, little transient occupancy hotel, and inn, if you will, which is probably a use that's needed in the community still today.
So, so the original hotel casino was, was not a traditional casino with a multi-unit hotel next to it?
Oh, absolutely it was. Yeah, the original one, yeah.
Here's the question, then. I know that Mrs. Whiffley brought up the issue of traffic on that little roundabout there. How would, how would a hotel casino complex, hotel casino complex affect that traffic?
Well, if, who's running the, the Google Earth machine? If you go up, keep going, can you drag that down?
It's a slide.
Oh, it's a slide. Geez, you guys don't have a Google Earth machine. That's where it is. That traffic would not come in this location where you're talking about. It has the ability to access onto, I think it's still Eagle Valley Road, isn't it?
Medical Parkway.
Medical Parkway. The world changes. And...
But is, is a hotel casino compatible with going on this property where we're talking about the multifamily?
Oh, I don't think so.
Why not?
Were you talking about the, that, the size?
Yeah. What zoning is the hotel casino supposed to be in, in the PUD?
TC.
Okay.
And that's what it was. At the time of this PUD, in my recollection, it was a tourist commercial PUD.
All right.
And then it was subsequently changed, I believe, right?
Okay. Got it, understood, understood.
Yeah, I, I, you know, I, and remember, the, the average daily trip impacts come at different times when you're dealing with transient residential, or residential, I mean, you know, you know what I'm talking about, folks, folks living there overnight, versus apartments, nine to five. So is there any, what else is on your list here? You know, I go back to the density allocation, I, I think it's, it's replete in multiple places that we went through, and we listed it, and we were very specific about those numbers. So, you know, I think that's, it's pretty clear to me that you gotta do that. And I, and I guess I, I might, you know, and I, I mentioned it below, I mentioned it in my letters, which added to your reading, that I, I just don't know how you can have any property completely consumed by a conditional use, and that not amount to a spot zoning.
Okay, well, we're gonna hear...
I know.
...how you might be able to do that. But, but I guess, Steve, let me, let me ask you this. Is it, would I be getting, would I be understanding you correctly that multifamily, whether it's spot zoning or not, is inappropriate, or is not inappropriate, is not permitted in this planned unit development? Because it's a planned unit development, not because it's specifically precluded, but just as it's because, in your opinion, it's a planned unit development that does not encompass or does not contemplate multifamily?
No, I, I don't think that's what I said at all. I think what I said was, I think as a use, a conditional use... I think what I said was, I think as a use, a conditional use, in a zone, it's allowable as long as it isn't the only use in that zone. You can't use it to rezone, because you defeat the whole purpose of having a PUD. You could have it as a part of, of the project, absolutely. I've never argued that. I think it's, that's, that's where we were headed. You want those compatible kinds of uses. There's nothing wrong with that. But you can have it be the only use.
And it doesn't matter that there's a business right next door to, to the north?
No, it's a-
So, you're saying it has to be, not just, not just, if you were gonna build an apartment complex here, the apartment complex should have built into it a commercial aspect?
Should have a commercial or an office?
Mixed, mixed use.
Yeah.
Not standalone.
And I, and I think it's doable. Again, I'm not against the conceptual side of having this.
And Brenda indicated in her opening statement that it was okay to have the condos there on the, on the top floor, because the majority of that property was commercial. Remember that statement?
Yeah, I, I think she called them apartments, but I, I understand what you're saying.
Okay. Where do I find that requirement that-
You won't?
Of how you decide whether it's, the majority is commercial or not. Where will I find that requirement?
You, you will find, in the compatibility, and I would have to, you're gonna, I've got a lot of stuff to go through to find it. But, but the reality is, is that it's the, it's making it compatible with the overall PUD. I don't know what that number is. That's a, ultimately, that's a function of an Architectural Review Committee in that community that's dealing with that, that says, you know, that's, that's a good use, that's a good mixed use, we like that, we like the way it looks. That's what it's for. That's what you're supposed, that's what the associations do. They should have done that long before they came to you. Because that's how you do it, to avoid this.
Steve, I have a follow-up question on, on the mayor's question, which is, how are you suggesting it gets determined how much commercial is appropriate in the mixed use? And before you answer, I'm gonna throw a ridiculous scenario at you. You put an ATM machine in the-
Lobby.
The lobby. Or you put a hairdressing station in, say, the little clubhouse that's gonna be out by the pool. How, how are you supposed to determine what is mixed use, what's appropriate? I mean, that's where I really struggle with this argument.
I'm not struggling with that. I, I don't think, I don't think either of those examples are substantively appropriate. If you go back to your special use permit, and again, I don't think that's the appropriate vehicle. I said that below, I'll say it again, I'll continue to say it here, or under oath, whenever it takes. When you take a look at your special use permit requirements for conditional uses, the one that struck me, and I stated in myself, I don't think they met their burden of proof down below, is the first one. How will the proposed development further and be in keeping with and not contrary to the goals of the master plan? Except it's not the master plan. It's the PUD. Because that is the master plan. That's how you deal with that issue. Is it complementary to, is it contrary to those goals? And they're there, I mean, you just gotta sit down and read them. They're there. And that's why you have a valid, viable Architectural Review Committee. You don't just, like, push every, say, you know, "Close the sale, got your deed, see you later, bye, have a good time, you're done. We'll, we'll tell you what we'll allow you to do." You can't do that. You just can't. You get yourself crossways with lots of things.
So, are you saying that everything else in that commercial zone has a stamp from an Architectural Review Committee? So, the Whitleys building and all the rest of them have, so-
I'm guessing it did, Lori. I don't, I don't know that for a fact, but that's my guess.
Susan, do they have a stamp? Because then why wouldn't this project been required to have a stamp before we accepted it in the office, if that's a requirement?
It's a sequence.
So, I don't specifically know if those plans have stamps or not. It's my understanding that the commercial buildings before were not required to go through an Architectural Review Committee, because one didn't exist for that area until the last couple of years, when they created an association to take care of the improvements of the Ivy Baldwin Circle. As it relates to the requirement of the Architectural Review Committee stamp for city approval, per the second addendum to the development agreement, we have a provision that requires us to ask for the Architectural Review Stamp in the areas where the variances were granted specific to that development agreement only. We don't look at the Architectural Review Stamp for any area that doesn't have a variance. We don't look for it for specific design guidelines, because we don't have the authority to do that under the mechanisms that have been approved to the, to date.
That would be why you typically would have an association, a viable association, with the ownership involved, so that you don't run afoul of those design guidelines.
Okay, all right. You're gonna have, I mean, go ahead, Steve.
The only other thing, and it's the last thing I think was on your path to Uncle Wiggly's house, was the density allocation. And I think, I think it's very clear, that there's 1,181 units. There are places where they're called lots, and then there's called, places where they're called sites. But at the end of the day, when you look at the analysis that was done, and that's in and part of the application, that's very specific in the analysis portion.
Steve, did you read the staff analysis on density?
Yeah, I just don't agree with it.
Okay.
You know, I, I just don't see that you can do that. I mean, if, if you follow that, and, and you apply the mixed use criteria, and that's why I said, I don't think you can put the 160 acres of mixed use over anything to do with Silver Oak. I really don't. Unless you amend the PUD. You have to go through, you, you don't get to just pick and choose from the bucket. That's not allowable, okay? There's, this is a PUD that's on this property, you gotta, you gotta stay within the general bounds of it. Now, it's not meant to be a straitjacket, but it's got concepts and theories and a theme, if you will. And it, I mean, it's all there. It's all in the application. So, so-
I assume, and I don't know, but I assume that when we go to the applicant, they're gonna say that multifamily is not precluded, and that it is in keeping with the PUD, as a special use, special use or whatever. They're gonna say that. They're gonna say, I would suspect, anyway, that contrary to your opinion, that it doesn't fit, that it does. Guys were all involved in this at the beginning. Help me understand how I make the decision as to who's correct or not correct.
Unless I'm mistaken. Oh, Mr. Simons is here.
How do I-
But they weren't in the meetings that I was in, and I guess that's it. And these are the documents that came as a result of those meetings. And these are the documents that came as a result of those approvals. And my answer to that question is, I agree you can have multifamily. It just can't be the only use. Because it defeats the purpose of the PUD designation that goes after whatever zoning designation you want.
All right, all right. We'll deal with it. Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So, I mean, I-
You'll have, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, unless there's something else that the, that the appellant wants to bring up, I'm gonna have the applicant come up, and then you guys will get a shot at the rebuttal. Mr. Whitley, come on up, if you want. Come on.
Oh, Mr. Mayor and supervisors, I just want to address the part about the Architect Review Committee. My understanding, and I was here on this particular project piecemeal through the historic, through Planning Commission, so I have, I'm gonna tell you what I know and what I remember.
Could you state your name?
Oh, Richard Whitley. And what it, what it was is, when there, when the commercial area was established, my understanding was, after 40% of the lots were sold, that there would be an architect committee to handle, handle this situation, so it wouldn't be a problem. And we, when we built our building, we did go to Garth, and we did go to Mark Turner, and we sat over there. I can't remember if he signed it, I can't remember if he stamped it, but I went over there to show him the project, get it approved, and before I brought it to the city. I don't know exactly what they did. But, and this gets to a bigger point, and this is a point that I think Judy Schallenberger was trying to make, and this is a point that was addressed slightly at the Planning Commission, was that we've really been excluded from this. Okay, we go to work every day, everybody does it.
Excluded from this, and by this, you mean what?
All the, the property owners, I can't say all, but most all of the property owners in that commercial subdivision, we have not received notice of, notification. Only thing we get, and so I know they know my address, because every quarter I get a bill to pay for the water, pay for the maintenance for the circle. So, I know they know how to get ahold of me, and in 10 years, not invited, I mean, invite me over to eat donuts or something, but at least tell me when the meeting's gonna happen. Nothing. And I've been in quite a few homeowners' associations, and I've been in quite a few meetings. This is not right. This is not, and so, then you get to the PUD, or not the PUD, let's just say special use permit. That irritates me more, because you say "special," and you have the discretion to say, "What is special? Is it special that the building doesn't look anything like what the owners of the property that sold it put in the guidelines for us?" I mean, it doesn't look like the design lines they requested. Is it special that none of the homeowners, or none of the property owners have been informed? Or, I'll say, most of them. I don't know if all of them have them, but at least enough to where there's a pattern. Is, is that special? I mean, if you look at the design, the color, do you believe that is compatible? I mean, did my phone actually go off? I'm sorry. I thought I had the little red mark on.
We know it's not your wife, so you don't have an excuse, okay?
But, but-
Or better, you better check who that is. Okay.
I think, I think I lost my thought, Mayor.
It's okay. What you're saying, what you're talking about, what's special?
No, 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 and it's fine. But, that, there's special use. I remember sitting on that Planning Commission a dozen times, and somebody came to "special." If I've got something special, I'm gonna go to my neighbors and say, "This is special." I'm not gonna ignore them. I'm not gonna just, all of a sudden, I show up at the Planning Commission, and some of us are out of town, some of us are some other place. I mean, is that special? Is that what, is that what your town wants? I mean, I've volunteered, I've been here for 40 years and volunteered for everything. I don't think this is what we need. These are my friends. I've worked with Sean, and I've worked with Mark. And because of this confrontation with the Planning Commission, or whatever's happening, or with the Planning Department, or the city not ironing this out before here, I'm stuck in this situation. And to be honest with you, I don't, I don't really want to be here. I just want, and the only reason I even appealed it was because I thought it stunk. It stunk. You're gonna simply say, "Sure, let's just do it." Does that mean that down the road, let's just say the 14th fairway becomes open game two for apartments? I mean, at what point does a PUD just get thrown out the door? And when we first went to the Planning Commission, we were really told, "We can't find the PUD." I mean, and I spent hours, and other people spent hours reconstructing or finding it, trying to get it printed, finding where it is. That's, that's not right. And so, basically, that's all I have to say. I mean, if this is, if this is something you think is special, if you can look at that picture and say, "That is special, and that is compatible," then we have an honest difference of opinion.
That's the question I raised, and one of them is, what, what authority do we have for architectural changes? Assuming that we, we agree with, that it should be multifamily or whatever. Suppose I disagree with the, the design of that building. What, what gives me or this board the authority to make an architectural change, as a condition or as mandatory?
You're asking somebody that's not qualified to, to be better than a Hartman or everybody here. I mean, that's not my expertise. But I would say my, I would say what I would say is, the architect aspect. If, if it hasn't been followed, if there is a good old boy network that you just don't get in unless you, and, and the mail doesn't show up. If the mail doesn't show up to one person, a coincidence. The mail doesn't show up to a lot of people, or more than one, it's more than a coincidence. I would say, at best, at least, it should be thrown back and say, "We need to look at this more serious." If there's no Architect Review Committee, if an Architect Review Committee was there, this would have been cleaned up. And the neighbors could have said, you know, "Can you make it look French? Can you make it look whatever? Can you make it blend into the buildings that are next to it?" And I don't want to insult the structure, you either know what you see, or you don't know what you see. But that isn't compatible. Why does our town have to be, everybody's a carcinite. Why is it, why did we split up? I mean, you, you probably got half the letters from the people that love it, half the letters from the people that hate it. But the fact of the matter is, we're all for having neighbors. We're all for you guys building apartments, units, whatever. But do it right. Don't throw everybody in Silver Oaks and say, "You know your PUD." We can kind of pick and choose. When there was a narrow garage road, short driveways, sidewalks on one side, that was part of the PUD, and that was something that all the people lived with. But they knew what they lived with, and they loved it, and it is a beautiful area. But it scares me to just throw the PUD out and simply say, you know, "That's it." And the other thing is, that's a terrible job up there. It really is. It's not as good as it looks, but sometimes you get what you deserve. If you don't have the courage, if you don't have the courage to say, "This is not right, I'm looking at a pig," if you don't have that courage, then you get what you get, you know? So, and Carson City, in my 40 years, has gotten a lot of what it didn't deserve. And now, we're trying to make it really look good. So, that's it. That was my soapbox, Mr. Mayor.
Not a bad, not a bad soapbox, Dick. Okay, all right, all right. Brad, do you have a question?
I do have some questions. First, for staff, we keep hearing about density, so what I'd like to do is just walk through the density and the amendments as, as they've gone through the years. So, this is on page 17 of the backup packet one. I just want to be clear that when we're talking about density, what, what are we talking about? And then I also want to make a distinction. The way I read these documents, there should be two associations, one for the commercial village, one for the residential properties. There should be two sets of CCNRs, one for the commercial village, one for the residential. Does that mean there's supposed to be two different design standards, too? Because I didn't see anything in here that related, or, or that I saw that told me that there should be one or two design standards, or does it go by the CCNRs? So, I'd like some clarity on that. Going back to the density, the way I read this is that the original density that was approved as the, under the Silver Oak application, was 181 units. And that was amended in 1998, and that added 24 units, for a total of 1,205 units. And then it was amended again in 2003, and 49 units were removed, which took it down to 1,156 units. And then in 2004, it was amended again, and 30 additional units were removed, which took it down to 1,126 units?
That's correct.
Okay.
All right. Sure, go, go.
Just for clarity, on this noticing, the noticing issue, staff notified when this was going to the Planning Commission, correct? The noticing that we're talking about is that the Silver Oak Commercial Village was not notified when this project was going through by those that are developing the project. Are we talking about two different sets of notices? Okay.
Susan, you want to answer?
Are you asking me or the appellant?
Yeah, well, both. You answer to the, you answer to the city portion. You answer to the, you answer to the city portion of it.
Okay, yeah, so I can't speak to anything outside of the city requirements, but I can tell you that pursuant to Carson City Code, thirty-three individual property owners within eleven hundred and twenty-five feet of the property were notified, not only of the original special use permit at the Planning Commission, but were required to also be notified, and were notified as a part of this appeal.
And that notification included being sent to the Schallenbergers?
And we verified that the Schallenbergers were on that list as well.
All right, but for the Silver Oak Commercial Village, and I don't know who wants to address this, you were not notified by the applicants that this project was being proposed, and does there exist an Architectural Review Committee to this day? Because I've asked this question over and over again, and I still don't have an answer.
We are supposed to have an, we are supposed to have a homeowners', property owners' association. When Judy came up, she handed to you the minutes from these meetings, which are very sketchy. They have been held, they're supposed to be held yearly, we're supposed to be notified. In ten years, I've never received any type of notification. I don't, I think the law says I don't just have to be notified, they have to actually contact me and let me know. If you guys read those minutes, you will see that, I think at almost every homeowners' property owners' association meeting, there was three people present. They were the Board of Directors, I believe, you can see who the three people are, and no one else was ever included. And I get a bill every quarter, which I pay, and so they know my address, but I've never received any kind of notification on this project or anything else. So, no notification. And so, I don't even, I've never been to a meeting, I've never been asked to come to a meeting, and to be honest with you, I would go to those meetings, and I would participate in those meetings, and I would think that then we would have an Architectural Review Committee, and a lot of these problems possibly would have been dealt with at that level. So, no notification. I, the problem that I had is I contacted most of the property owners in our association, in our, that are property owners, and a lot of them are medical doctors, and the mail comes to their professional office, and they are not the ones that open the mail. They have told me that they do not believe they've ever been notified of any kind, but they can't swear on a Bible, because they don't open their own mail. And if you look at those minutes, you'll see that some of those meetings are held at, I just noticed one was held at three o'clock in the afternoon. We're a, we're a group of professional offices, most of us, most of those doctors work from eight in the morning till five. It doesn't seem logical to hold a meeting at three o'clock, you would hold them in the afternoon, but we have never been notified, never.
Okay, thanks. All right. Steve, another shot, go.
Just was an answer to the question about the two sets of CCNRs and all that. There are two sets of CCNRs. You, I think, Mr. Mayor, I think it was you that read one of the provisions out of the commercial CCNRs, but in there at one point three is a whole litany of things. The project design theme discourages the use of Spanish Mediterranean, southwestern, mass and scale are important consideration in larger structures and projects, and the project preferences to emphasize classical French country, craftsman English country, and similar design themes. That is throughout. Building design and construction shall be architecturally harmonious and compatible with the other buildings and improvements from time to time located in the Silver Oak Commercial Area. So, I don't, I'm not familiar with Architectural Review Committee. I think it was always envisioned that there would be one, there should be two sets, there should be two sets of associations with meetings, I mean, that's the normal thing, and particularly in the sense of a com, you know, a common interest ownership committee, communities, which, we passed that law, one sixteen, many years ago, was prior to this, that dictate...
Suppose there isn't an Architectural Review Committee?
Well, it's up to the owners to determine whether they want one.
Okay, but how does that affect my decision here, or our decision?
I told you before, I do not believe that you have the power to deal with architectural issues. I think the Planning Department can be notified of those issues, that they're in violation of the CCNRs, if in fact that's someone's belief. But at the end of the day, that is a matter for the associations, whether it's the one dealing with the residential, or the one in the commercial. I don't think it's an appropriate place for all of you.
I tend to agree with you.
That's just mine.
And just a clarification, under one point three, what it actually says is, "The project design theme discourages the use of Spanish Mediterranean and southwestern..."
Right, did I say encouraged?
Yeah.
Yeah, sorry. God, I'd never do that.
Right, but it doesn't say prohibited, it says discourages.
No, 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 yeah, no. Okay. No, it is, again, you don't usually prohibit things unless they're really draconian. It's just not the nature of PUD. So, if there's nothing else?
Okay. Thanks, Steve. All right. Anything else from the applicant, or from the appellant? We'll get another shot at the end, but rebuttal. But I think right now, I think, I think we're gonna take a five-minute break, and then we're gonna have the applicant come up, and then we'll see if we can finish this off, okay? Okay, we're gonna bring the meeting of the Board of Supervisors back to order. I think it's, now we're gonna hear from the applicant. Who's gonna do that? You got Alfredo back there, come on. Get up at the front of the, Alfredo, I've been waiting for years to get you in this position where you're at that table, and I can rag on you. So get up there. All right. All right.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Mark Turner, for the record. Thank you all for your time tonight. I know it's been a long day for you all. It's been a lot of work for, for everybody involved to get to this point, to discuss this matter. So, we just want you to know that it doesn't go unnoticed, all the hard work that gets put into talking about a matter like this. I'm gonna try to keep my comments pretty brief and pretty centered. You've heard a lot of discussion tonight about intent, and what, what the ideas may or may not have been for this area within Silver Oak over time. But I think that what's down in writing is what is, really should, should carry this, this hearing here. Mr. Hartman was involved with the, the drafting of the PUD document almost twenty-five years ago. It's a long time, and a lot of things have transpired. In a quarter century, everyone, in some cases, my hair's gotten grayer, Steve's has gotten whiter, we've all, we've all aged, and we've been through a major recession, the likes of which this town has never seen. So, things are significantly different than they were twenty-five years ago. I just wanna touch on a couple things. When we, when we contemplated this project at the beginning, we saw a need for a product that's not present in Carson City in adequate amounts right now, and we began the process the way you should begin the process, which is to consult with the Planning Department, to ask the questions, to be given the guidance, and proceed along the path. That's why we have a Planning Department, they do a good job of advising people on, on how to carry out development plans here in Carson City. So, we did, we feel, dot our i's, cross our t's, look at what was in writing, and follow what was in writing. We began the process, and notifications were sent out, and people responded, people showed up at the meeting. We had a meeting, we had a hearing, the SGP was granted, and then it was appealed. I wanna echo Mr. Whitley's comments. Mr. Whitley and his wife, they're, they're very fine people. We've worked together in the past. Unfortunately, we do have a difference of opinion on this matter here, but, you know, we harbor no hostility. It's, it's a, it's a business matter, the way we look at it, and we wanna keep it focused on the facts. As far as the, the due diligence that was done through the process of considering this, this development, we did commission traffic reports. They were, they were completed, they were submitted, they were analyzed. It was determined that the information that was contained in those traffic reports was sufficient that we could move forward. So I don't wanna get into a lengthy discussion about, about traffic, other than to say that we fulfilled the requirements for analyzing the traffic, and threw a report, and the report was reviewed, and we moved forward from there. As far as the Architectural Review Committee question is concerned, like I said, Steve left Silver Oak, I think prior to two thousand, it's been a long time. Early on in the, the days of Silver Oak, Steve, I think, played an integral part in, in Architectural Review. As Steve left, and things changed, and the economy slowed down, you know, some of those responsibilities fell into my lap, and, and I, I don't believe that we've ever had an Architectural Review Committee for the commercial buildings that exist in the Commercial Village. The, the actual association, the Commercial Association, which I think it's important to draw a very clear distinction between association guidance and rules that fall under chapter one sixteen, and a Commercial Association. It is not a residential... Uh, it is not a residential association in the commercial village, it is a Commercial Association. Uh, the Commercial Association was put together, and we began charging dues in 2008. Prior to 2008, the declarant, us, Silver Oak, we footed the bill for all of the costs associated with the commercial area. We paid for the maintenance of the landscaping that you see in Ivy Baldwin Circle there, and in 2008, we formed the association primarily for the purpose of helping to fund, uh, the care and upkeep of those properties, or that property down there that benefits, uh, the commercial property owners. So anyway, uh, as far as a, an Architecture Review Committee is concerned, there is, as far as my knowledge, no commercial structures have been built since we actually formed and began operating the Commercial Association in 2008. So prior to that, uh, there really wasn't a, uh, an association to convene, it was an Architecture Review Committee to convene, uh, and, and debate, uh, a particular project before, um, it was sent off to plan check, or, or whatever the, the next step it was at the time. Uh, we, going back to, to our, uh, working with the planning department on this project, we followed their guidance, uh, the, the guidance that we got from the planning department was to utilize the special use permit process, um, so that's what we did, um, and, uh, and that's where we are here today. Other projects in Silver Oak have been approved through a special use permit. Uh, Mr. Whitley's building, uh, it's a nice building, fine building, was approved through a special use permit. Uh, Sierra Place, the retirement facility, was approved through a special use permit. The Super Kmart was approved through a special use permit, three very different uses. Uh, Sierra Place has 63 apartment units in it, on two acres, and they were not required to bring any density, uh, in when they were approved. Uh, Mr. Whitley build, Mr. Whitley's building has two residential units, he was not required to bring any density in, uh, when he was approved. So, uh, it is, it is our opinion, and there's been a lot of opinions expressed tonight, that, that there is no requirement for us to bring density for this proposed multifamily complex. Um, let me check my notes here. See if there's anything else I really need to talk about. In regards to the PUD document, uh, we've, we've heard discussion about whether multifamily was allowed, or whether it's not allowed, or whether it's, uh, it should be combined with, uh, uh, you know, some other use. There was a lot of time and effort put into the PUD document when it was drafted, as Mr. Hartman has kinda chronicled for us tonight, and, and if it was intended for multifamily to be excluded as a use, there was ample opportunity, and it should have been excluded in writing. It was not, and that's one of the reasons why we're here tonight. And, uh, we feel that the, the document needs to stand on its own, you read the language, you see what's in it, you see what's permitted, you see what's not. Uh, multifamily, as, as we know, is a not permitted use in a tourist commercial zone, but, uh, we're not in a tourist commercial zone. Other than that, I, I just wanna say that we've read the, the reports that were provided by staff, uh, we concur, uh, if you have any questions, uh, please feel free to ask me. I do have Jeff Frame, the project architect, who has designed other structures in the Silver Oak area, in the medical complex area, uh, he does, uh, good work. Uh, I've worked with Jeff Frame on, on projects in the past, uh, and, we selected him based on his expertise and the type of work that he does. We, we, we went to the trouble to hire a professional architect who has a good reputation, and has done good work, not only in the Reno area, but also in our own community of Carson City here. And we also have, uh, our counsel here, Kristen Martini, and she may have some comments as well, so I'll just hold off for now. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Frame, do you wanna go, you wanna?
Uh, for the record, Jeff Frame, architect, I don't, I think right now I'd just open it up to questions. I would like to address one thing about the public notification, though. Normally, historically, public notification on a special use permit, zone change, land use, whatever it is, that is done by, by usually the local planning department. You don't have the applicant do that, and the reason you don't is because you wanna make sure that all the, all the surrounding property owners within a certain distance, in this case, I guess 1,150 feet, something like that, get notified, which is 1,125 or 1,150 feet, whatever, is, is a, is a wide range. Usually that is, in other cities, and I realize it's other cities, not Carson City, usually in other cities, it's like 600 feet. So here we are, twice the distance here, so, um, you know, I think that's why it's, it's usually done by the, uh, yes?
If I could just address that, I think the confusion lies in the fact that PUD follows everything in this designation.
Right.
So do the rules change? That is, it, does it have to go under a different scrutiny? And I think that's what it comes down to, is my thought process.
Okay.
Since you asked for questions, I have two questions. Uh, I think I read that these are high-end apartments, and two, that, uh, the architectural design was done to fit into the existing, or would be compatible with, with the design, the surrounding design. Did I read those right?
Well, I, your first question, are they higher end? Yes, they're higher end, I believe.
And, and Jeff, on, following up on that, what, what constitutes a higher-end apartment?
Well, I think what, you know, it's up to interpretation, Mr. Mayor, obviously. I think what constitutes a higher-end apartment is, is something, uh, there's style in there, of course, there's, uh, there's amenities, some of the amenities on the inside that, the client has wanted to add in there, you just, we don't put them in our, how do I say this, production apartments, if you will, or student apartments. Um, you know, we have a, I believe the one-bedroom units are about 800 square feet, correct me if I'm wrong, they're gonna rent for about $1,100 a month. Uh, it's over and above, you, normally what you see for an 800-square-foot apartment. Uh, there's usually more amenities in the complex as a whole, usually more green space that you have, and, and that's what we tried to accomplish here.
Talk to me about the architectural design, and whether or not you attempted, or did make it compatible with surrounding architectural designs? Or did not, I don't, I just wanna know. Because the argument is, hey, you know, this doesn't look like anything that's there.
You're, you're right, it doesn't look like anything that's there, and, and to be as tactful as possible, that, that was our goal. Um, you know, it, it, uh, uh, we don't really design buildings to blend in, we design our buildings to get noticed. I heard a statement that, you know, you probably got letters, "Half the people hate it and half the people love it." To us, that's 100% success. As an artist and an architect, I want people to have a reaction, love it or hate it. As I drive down the circle, you know, I, I kinda just drive past the buildings, they don't really, they're kinda there, but they don't really stand out. You know, our, our goal was to, to design a project where we invite younger, this millennial-type generation who doesn't wanna own a house, who, uh, you know, you've got a bunch of medical professionals just up the street, who, uh, who are, uh, they're not permanent in nature, in that they're gonna rent a, an apartment for one, two, maybe three, four years, they're gonna rent a place, and then they're gonna move on. And that's what this project is for. Um, it is to, is to draw those type of people, those type of residents in there.
And, Mr. Turner, did I hear you correctly, that there is no Architectural Review Committee for the commercial area?
Yes, that's, that's correct, Mr. Mayor. Uh, as I stated previously, there have been no buildings, commercial buildings built in the area since the formation of the Association in 2008. And if you look at the, the governing documents, which we reviewed, uh, earlier in the week, the, uh, the Association and, is, is on a, a percentage basis, and, and I believe in looking at the document, that 175% of the land has been transferred, in excess of 75% of the land has been transferred from the declarant to others, uh, then there's a shift in, in the, the control from the declarant to, uh, a, a body that would be formed of, of the property owners. Well, we're not at that 75% threshold yet, we're very close, but we still retain that threshold, and doing the math, we are not over the threshold. So, you know, there may be opinions as to, well, you, you should just do that, well, we, we follow the rules, and it's 75%, we're not there yet.
Okay. Okay, is it, your first name was, give your name again, please?
Kristen Martini.
Kristen Martini?
So, what I'd like to say, I think that Mr. Turner articulated our points nicely, but I'd like to just, again, reaffirm that we agree entirely with the staff report, um, and the District Attorney's memorandum, and also, um, the memorandum from Susan that was written on December 7th. Um, we think it's accurate, we think that the, um, Planning Commission's decision should be affirmed. And with respect to, um, some of Mr. Hartman's statements about, because he was involved in the underlying process, and in the drafting of the PUD, and his statements about what was envisioned, what the drafters and the parties thought, um, something should look like, or should be excluded, um, that isn't really a proper consideration here, because this is a, a legal document, it's a written instrument, um, it's not ambiguous, nobody says it's ambiguous, including Mr. Hartman, so it needs to be construed according to the four corners of the document, um, and because it doesn't expressly exclude it, then, as articulated in, um, uh, Jason's memorandum, uh, then we should follow the four corners of the document, and that permits the special use permit in this case.
Okay, got it. All right. Anything else from the applicant? All right. We'll hear some rebuttal from the appellant then.
Wait, can I ask a couple?
Oh, I'm sorry, Jeff, go.
I gave my light on, a couple of questions, sorry.
I didn't see it, I'm sorry.
I didn't have the light on, it's my fault.
Okay, all right.
Couple of questions, either for yourself or for staff, but clarification on backup packet number four, page three, section A. The project is located within the retail commercial zoning district within Silver Oak PUD. It goes on to say, Carson City Municipal Code, 18-whatever, provides that special use permits are required for the conditional use in the retail commercial zoning, which include multifamily dwellings. Is this correct?
That is correct, yes.
So, in essence, they are compliant with the municipal code by this definition, by what, by what they're proposing to do. Would that be correct?
In that they requested a special use permit for a conditional use in the retail commercial zoning district, yes.
Right. And that pla, that passed the Planning Commission, correct?
Correct.
And then they appealed, then the other side appealed this, correct?
Correct.
But it's within the guidelines of the, um, code section, correct? We're following the guidelines?
That's correct.
Okay. Page four, the density. High density, and I'm just, just taking from right in the middle, high density, but provide no citations, no citations to Silver Oak PUD or part of Carson City Municipal Code that prohibits the project-proposed density. So right now, the number of units that's going in there, which is less than, it says approximately 22 dwelling units per unit, but actually, no, it's 36 dwelling units per acre, but you're putting in 22? Is that correct? So you're 14 less than the high-density says you should put in, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Into the, um, the architectural style, which is on page five, the architectural style, again, I, I'm going back to it's something you paraphrased, I mean, I wear a bright shirt, a lot of people like it, a lot of people hate it, but I, I think it's a matter of taste. I'm not, I think it looks good, but, um, some don't.
Goes with your socks.
Yeah, I, you have to see the sock. But I, I think, if I'm understanding, what we're trying to accomplish is, there is, the Planning Commission and the Building Department, the applicant, as they pursued this and brought this forward, they're all within the municipal code, building codes, they're not in any violation, I'm just trying to get a clear picture, they're within the guidelines as set forth in Carson City, whether it's municipal code, building codes, they're within all parameters, is that correct?
Yes, that is correct.
For staff, I wanna go back to the comments that were made about Sierra Place, uh, and I just wanna confirm, from your perspective, that Sierra Place was done under a special use permit, it's got 63 residential units, and they were not required to add density to the overall PUD.
I can't speak to the specific number of units, but I can speak to the fact that a special use permit was required and obtained by Sierra Place, and to my knowledge, a density transfer did not occur to accommodate that special use permit.
Um, Lee, did you wanna?
Just, by, by zoning, that's a congregate, that it, they are, they are apartment units, by, by the building code, that, by the building code, those are apartment units, they have, because they're, they're living facilities, they have to meet that unit, but the special use permit was for a congregate care facility, not multifamily, so I think that's a, I wanna make sure, just, we're not being, we're being honest about that distinction, so it was a special use permit for a congregate care facility, which are, that's terminology in the zoning, that's where there's common eating facilities, but they are, in fact, individual li, living units within that facility.
Right, but my question is specifically about the overall density of the PUD, and was there a requirement to bring or transfer density in order to approve the special use permit for Sierra Place?
So just have, I'll, I'll, again, just having a little more history, Lee Plummel, Community Development Director, I've been with the, with the department longer than Susan has, in dealing with this last one. Sierra Place, in fact, came in before my time, um, but it, but at one point, um, more than 10 years ago, actually, up for, close to 15 years ago, I was handed over the file of, the box of files of Silver Oak to, uh, understand kinda the history of that, and kinda follow that through, I've turned, now turned that over to Susan, um, but, that, predating that, so there's nothing in there to indicate that units were removed, that residential units were removed elsewhere in Silver Oak as a result of that approval. I, it was before my time, and we, and we didn't research that specifically, but there's nothing in the record of the history of the, of the, of Silver Oak to indicate that residential units were removed elsewhere because of that project.
What's underlying zoning on that parcel?
Neighborhood business.
And is congregate care a conditional use of neighborhood business, or is it a primary use?
Conditional use.
Thank you.
So, I know that I understand that you said you would like the, the building to stand out, and that's an architectural feature that architects like. So, but my question is, the document, the actual PUD indicates it needs to be a linked and unified with all the other buildings, are you telling me as an architect that you think it meets that condition of the PUD?
Well, I, I think what it meets the condition of is, it is not Spanish Mediterranean or French country, which the PUD discourages, and I think if you look at the surrounding buildings, I don't think you could call any of those buildings stylistically Spanish Mediterranean or French country. So, in that regard, yes, I think it does meet the conditions of the PUD.
Jeff, can I ask you a question? Wasn't there an alternate col, color scheme offered as well?
We did prepare an alternate color scheme for the client, yes, we did.
Okay, and we, none of us have seen that here today, correct?
I don't believe so. We have it here, though, if you'd like to.
It would probably be a good idea to see that, and then, second of all...
I don't know if we can do that.
Can we?
No.
No.
Other question I have, and Jason, this one's for you, and it goes back to Bob's question. Does the Board of Supervisors, uh, have to make adjustments in the PUD densely, density allocation as a result of this project? I understand Susan's, on page three of her, um, answers to all the conditions. And I think, I, just for the public, I, I think we need to reiterate what her finding was in terms of density for this project on that particular land use.
Well, I, I can tell you that I, I'll, I, we concur with, um, Susan's analysis of that, and I don't know if she's in a position to kinda walk through that, but we've reviewed that, and we concur with that, that there is no density transfer required.
Okay. Thank you. Gentlemen, ladies. The appellant, Steve, or anybody on the appellant's side, you get rebutt- The appellant, Steve, or anybody on the appellant's side, you get rebuttal time, come on up, Mr. Whitley, if you want to come up and sit with him, that's fine.
Turn the red light on.
Can I sit by you if I stay quiet?
If you stay quiet, yes. Let's see, where shall I start?
Well, try starting, Steve, with the issue of the special use permit granted to Sierra Place.
My recollection was, and I'm glad we got clarified, I was thinking it was more commercial because of the location next to Kmart, when we met with the folks that bought that particular property, they were out of Washington, and they liked the fact that it was on the main drag, so, and it was close to Kmart, and what was going to be a grocery store, and that was a big deal in terms of offerings for those folks in a congregate care facility, because in those days, they were more ambulatory than perhaps what that facility is ended up being.
Was there a density transfer associated with it?
There was not, and I don't, and I think it's because it was more in the nature of a commercial use. I think congregate care is a commercial use, it's not necessarily a residential use. It's not, in my view, it's not typically different than a transient occupancy use. You don't have the same kinds of burdens on the community that you do in multifamily in a hotel kind of use or a congregate care use. Obviously, we've, I think all of us who live in that area or who work in that area have found that the fire department shows up there quite a bit, and so that's an impact in the community that you don't normally think about when you're up there doing what you're doing, so, but there was no density transfer, but I still go back to my original premise that I mentioned before, and that is, I don't think there's any question that when you deal with a residential use, that's a unit. The fact that it's an apartment, I mean, I'm sure I can walk down the street and come up with a co-op that will turn that into a New York-style cooperative project, and I don't need anything else. So, you know, by virtue of some documents, I can create, you know, deeded interest in that, so I, and I'm not buying into that argument, I think that clearly, it has, it's a residential use, and that's what we capped at, that number, whatever that number is today, and it's been all over the place.
Steve, during one of the breaks, I had an opportunity to look up some Latin.
Which one?
Yeah, I was struggling with it.
Don't take me back to law school.
Yeah, well, this is a little law school question, but there's a Latin phrase, "cosus omnis pro omiso abendus est."
Did you Google that?
I did.
You did, didn't you? Yeah, you didn't come up with that on your own.
But the legal translation of that for lawyers here is, "A thing omitted from enumeration must be held to have been omitted intentionally."
Yeah, and I guess if you're doing Blackstone's commentaries and you're dealing with that and you didn't have a PUD ordinance, then you probably would have that, but in a planning context, particularly in the last forty to fifty years, and I realize, and Mr. Turner's correct, I am getting much older and whiter and all that, but the fact of the matter remains is that good plans are still good plans. I think Silver Oak is still a good plan, I think this doesn't help it in that categorization, but I don't think, when the boys that could speak that language fluently and not sound Spanish like you just did, I think that that was a whole different world, and we have a very advancing planning situation, and it's the ebb and flow, I mean, we've gone through, you know, just look at Carson City, look at some of our new buildings and all that stuff, it just, but no, I don't think it does apply, not in this context.
I got you, Stephen. Put aside the Latin and the, like, Spanish Latin or whatever you want to call it, which I agree with you, it sounds like that.
I thought maybe you were Guzman for a minute.
Where is he? I thought he was going to be here tonight, where is he?
Well, he sent you a letter, and I think Terry's not feeling well, so.
But in all seriousness, do you agree with that from a legal perspective, that when you, in contract law, when you construe a document, that a thing omitted from enumeration must be held to have been omitted intentionally, do you agree with that?
I think in the context of contract law, I do, but I don't in the context of planning in the PUD sense, because you're trying to build in flexibility, you know, and I mentioned this to Susan and to her very senior guy that looks over her shoulder, and I think we at one time proposed that that density that wasn't used, like in AA or BB, whatever that first cluster unit was, whatever that was, that that density didn't go away, that it could be moved as long as it only went to clusters, because we were trying to buffer that more intense use, and that was always the thought, that that was never going to go away, those units were not going to go away, because the project was planned for eleven-hundred-and-eighty-one, or whatever that number was, and as long as you kept them buffered, it was okay, and then they told me, they said, no, no, we're not going to do that. I think that's wrong, I think the project was planned for eleven-eighty-one, I don't know how many of those units weren't used.
So if there's, if I wanted to deny this project, would I make a finding like this, this project is denied, and the appeal is reversed, I mean, the Planning Commission's decision is reversed, because the project doesn't comply with the intent of the planned unit development? Is that what you're asking me to make?
No.
All right, tell me how I would make the decision then.
If I were you, I would remand it back so that it doesn't amount to a spot zoning. And I've said it, and I've said it publicly, I've said it in writing, I don't, conceptually, I don't have a problem with having multiple family use in the context of a commercial use and a retail use. I just think when you supplant a conditional use and wipe out the retail commercial PUD designation, I just think that's wrong, I don't think you can do that.
And that gets to where Supervisor Monkowski was talking about, how do you make that judgment call if it's not set forth in the documents?
I think that's where this association becomes important, and-
But the association, I have no control over that.
I understand that.
So I'm here dealing with-
And I think-
So help me understand.
I think you remanded back on the basis that they didn't provide, and I laid it out, I tried to lay it out in my letter, my most recent letter, where I dealt with what I thought were the shortcomings of the effort at the Planning Commission, which was, there was not an adequate addressing of the four things that you need to look at, how the proposal will impact immediate vicinity, there are significant impacts of the immediate vicinity, just by nature of narrow streets and, you know, yeah, it may fit a traffic engineer's calculation of a service level C or D, or pick a number of B, but that doesn't mean it doesn't impact the immediate vicinity. How does the proposal support the goals, objectives, recommendation of master plan concerning land uses and related policies for the neighborhood where the subject property is situated? Well, that brings in the PUD, in my opinion, and again, I don't think that was done, I don't think that was shown down below. I understand that the markets change, and, you know, and I'm old, and they're young, and they want to live somewhere for a couple of years and move on, I get that. I've lived in the same house since nineteen-seventy-nine, I get it, I'm probably be buried there and be an artifact, some archaeologists will find me. But the fact of the matter is, that didn't get addressed, I don't think, to a satisfactory level. Will it impact properties within that use district? Absolutely it does. I don't think that was addressed either, it was just, well, it's just one of the uses, and so yippee-skippee, that's the way it goes. We're going to make the whole thing that, and I think that's where the violation of the PUD comes. And are there any impacts on public services and facilities, you know, you can argue that all day long, I mean, yeah, there's probably enough sewer capacity, and, you know, you crank up the pressure on the water and you can get enough water there, but I think it's going to impact public services and the facilities in that area, just my opinion, but I don't think that was handled down below. I do believe that there's a way to make that project work, but it can't be the only zone, because you just throw the PUD out the window. You know, there was a statement about the vision, you know, and granted, my vision is not as good as it used to be, but I can still read the CCNRs for the area in question, for this commercial village, and it ties it back to compliance with a master drainage plan, the architectural design and landscaping plan approvals by Silver Oak. It goes through the reciprocal easements, and subsequent to these being done, you had another master drainage amendment that went on on the property, as I remember, but you go back to the issues of, you know, eye of the beholder, okay? And I get that, I mean, I totally get it, I, it's not my idea of what I believe is appropriate in the capital city that's been here for well over a hundred years, but I understand duties in the eye of the beholder, but in this case, we are very specific in these CCNRs, and again, I understand that's not your bailiwick. Mass and scale are important, the preference is to emphasize, it doesn't say mandate, it says emphasize, classical, French country, craftsman, English country, and similar design themes. Now, most of the people that have bought and put a lot of money, there's millions of dollars invested in that area, I think would, there's some variation of these, and I understand that Jeff may not think those are, you know, they don't have a big pop when he drives down the street, and I agree with that, there are some of us who don't want to have pop, you know, we want it to be quality and nice and not be Vegas where you tear it down every twenty years and go put something else up. That's not been Carson City's model, and again, I go back to the visioning study, which is all part of this. So when you look at what is in the CCNRs that impact the site, when you look at what was supposed to be done to deal with a special use condition, I don't think they made it. And the other thing is, I don't think that you can grant a singular use that's a conditional use without that being a spot zone. So that's just, that's my opinion, and I'm old, and that's the way, not as old as you.
Not that old. I think I'm the oldest one in the room here. All right, Mr. Whitley, you want to go?
I just want to clarify a couple of points, and I'll make it really quick. As far as the compatibility for the Planning Commission, when it says compatibility, I didn't mean to imply that the half letters pro, half letters con on this project meant that half liked the visual effects, because I'll let you decide what that percentage is, I won't go there. But as far as the Architect Review Committee, Mark Turner implied or said, they're just about at that seventy-five percent that would constitute that we would need an Architect Review Committee, or they should do that. My understanding is the CCMC one-seven-point-zero-nine-point-one-one-zero says forty percent.
We've got to look up, I don't know.
I don't, I don't, I'm just, that is my understanding, it says forty percent constitutes that there will be moving to a community architect review, some sort of, it's shifted at that percentage.
Is there an answer to that?
Mr. Hartman probably knows better than I.
I find it odd that-
I have no answer to that, I mean, I don't, I guess-
I find it odd that we're directing a CCNR, a private development restriction, that would say, you know, what you've got to have in terms of percentages for turnover, but we'll look at that.
I would agree with the mayor. I just don't think you're going to have the code dictate a percentage of ownership, but I know there's a percentage of ownership in the documents, and I don't remember that it's seventy-five, I thought it was sixty, and there are two sets of documents, obviously there's two sets of CCNRs, but kind of all goes back to the ultimate issue of-
What am I going to do with it?
Yeah, I told you.
Can't do much with it, okay.
They just remand it so we can solve it.
Well-
I know, it doesn't solve everybody's question, I get it.
Okay, all right, yeah, sure, go.
Another point is fair, and it was about density, Silver Oak's implied that they could have had a lot more density, but they were kind and went less density, or whatever the reason being. The fact of the matter is, they are at the height requirement now, some of the apartments are eight-hundred feet, to get up to that thirty, to get up to higher density, you either have to go higher and you're not allowed to, or you have to make the apartment smaller, so that's a mood issue. The other thing is, right now, the density is so tight that the snow removal, there's no accommodations for snow removal, other than dumping it into the golf course. Now, is that compatible? I mean, I don't find that compatibility, that you made it so dense that you don't even have a place, everybody else in this town that has commercial property has a place to put their snow. It's, I'm not getting away without drainage and snow, but there's, we can just kind of dump it over there. Seems like they kind of pushed the density about as hard as you can get, so that was-
Okay, got it, yeah, Steve, sure. Turn the mic on again, Steve.
Did I turn that off? I must have turned that off. And I do believe that the PUD and the application are very specific about that, I just, you know, but I also think that they're entitled to whatever units they didn't use in the clusters, that's my opinion. I don't know how many of those units there are, but that was, it was part of the overall package, and I haven't, I don't know what the math is and all that, but I think they should be entitled to that. Should it be here? Yeah, I'm not real keen on that, because we tried to keep it internalized in the clusters.
Is it fair, Steve, to require this applicant to make a density transfer when two other special use permits dealing with at least living quarters did not?
Well, you're not dealing, I mean, you're dealing with a massive change, though, I think it's the magnitude of the change. If you put ten or fifteen units in this, or five units, or something that's not the dominant use, and dominant, that's, I think that's why you've got to have the association, but to be the only use, I think you've got to find the unit someplace, either get them from, you know, what stuff got already get thrown away when the projects weren't dense enough to use up all the clustered densities that were assigned, and it's all there, it's all in the PUD, all of those densities were assigned to those clustered areas, and they got dropped off because they just couldn't make the geometry work to make the house. They're, in my opinion, they're entitled to that density, whatever that density is, I don't have any clue what that is.
All right, all right, anything else?
I'm sure I can come up with, if you let me Google, I can find some Latin.
Well, you get that Latin back, I mean, I was waiting for you, Steve, on that, I got you.
Yeah, outside even.
Okay, all right, all right, unless there's nothing, there's, I don't hear anything further from either the appellant or the applicant, is that correct? All right, then we're going to come back here where the hard decision's going to be made, and it's eight o'clock, and we'll see where we go. So, Board, we now have to do our duty, or whatever we're going to do. So, who wants to start off? Anybody?
I'll start off.
Sure.
I'm not afraid, really. No, I have pages of notes on the different testimony that we've heard tonight, but what I keep coming back to is that there have been precedents- I keep coming back to is that there have been precedents set. And I don't know how we can just pick and choose. When a precedent's been set, and that's always the danger when you set a precedent, then it becomes very difficult to go backwards at a later date. The fact is that we have two properties that have been developed through a special use permit that have residential use that were not required to bring density. And personally, I, my personal feeling is, I'd like to see the density transfer, but I don't know how I make that decision when we've already allowed two other properties to be developed that have residential and didn't have to bring density to the table. I can go through the design guidelines, I can go through the CCNRs, I can go through all these documents, and I can find references that will back the arguments of either party. So in a case like that, then I have to stick with the overall facts that are in writing here and not with intent. And the fact is that multifamily was not prohibited. In fact, it says just the opposite. "The allowable land uses for the property shall be as set forth in the Carson City Municipal Code, as modified by the Silver Oak Development Agreement. While subsequent deed restrictions may exclude certain uses otherwise available by law, it is not the intent of this declaration to exclude any uses allowable pursuant to the current Carson City ordinance." What that says to me is that there were ample opportunities to restrict multifamily, and it wasn't done. So, you know, I just don't see anything in here that prohibits the project, unfortunately. I don't like the design, honestly, guys, I really don't like the design, but I don't see, I don't think that that's in our purview. That goes through the Architectural Review Committee. Whether it exists or doesn't exist is an issue for the property owners to deal with. So I hope you all deal with that. But sitting up here at the dais, trying to make a decision when we all know everybody involved in this process, I've gotta go with not with what somebody's opinion is on what it looks like, not with what somebody's opinion is of what the intent was, but what is in writing.
Jim?
Well, first, I'd like to compliment both sides. You each brought forward compelling arguments, although I don't think the argument on this side really was enough to bring me personally to a decision that would allow the stoppage of what we're, what these gentlemen are trying to accomplish. And the reason I say that, I'm reading this line, "The Planning Commission staff correctly determined that the appropriate mechanism for such multifamily apartment project in a retail-commercial zoning district within Silver Oak planned unit development, PUD, is by a special use permit." Now, if that was illegal, or if there was any legal tanglements to that, I believe the DA would've brought forward an argument as to why that is not legally correct. You know, the appearance of the building, it's not up to me. I could, don't care. It's not my choice. That's something for somebody else to weigh out. But what this lays out, what that one paragraph said to me is that we're following the letter of law. And if we weren't, I believe the DA would say something to that effect, that this isn't per the legal ramifications, that we could, you know, protect the interest of the community. I see your points of view, but I'm gonna go with the letter of the law in this case, and as best I, if I'm interpreting it correctly, maybe I'm not saying it correctly, but that's what I'm reading here, and I've heard no argument that this is wrong. And that's what I'm looking for.
Well, this is my ward, and I've spoken to a lot of people on both sides of this issue. And the DA and the Planning Department have been an invaluable resource for us in providing clear direction. We've met with them extensively on this issue. Precedent has dictated this special use permit process, so I don't know how, as Brad said, we pick and choose who has to go through that and who does not. And in order to uphold the appeal, we'd have to circumvent the direction of our DA and our Planning Department. That troubles me, because they have looked into this extensively and reviewed it completely, and we have quizzed them at length on every single aspect of this. With regards to the project itself, the original documentation states the guidelines cannot be all-encompassing and are meant to encourage rather than restrict creativity. And I see the project as that. There are other buildings within that development that reflect a similar architecture, and they may be done by the same architect. I don't know. But I do think that it can be compatible, something that needs to be worked out within Silver Oak itself. And lastly, the original application, and I go back to what I had said initially, speaks to flexibility. The original PUD was done twenty-one years ago. Every decision we've made here today has been about future, things that have changed, things that have moved on. I think this is something that what is being proposed reflects the flexibility that needs to happen here now. We are in a different time, when a different sort of living situation is needed. So in that respect, you know, I have to, I have to deny the appeal.
You don't have to, if you don't wanna go ahead.
We're useless. It's in our normal thing, that means we're useless. So for me, one of my original questions was about the fact that you did, in your application, put the variances to the Carson City Municipal Code. You were specific to talk about setbacks, and I agree that they were mechanics, but that also leads me to believe that you were reviewing the code to determine what you did not want or wanted to do differently in your PUD. And at the time of the PUD, it did allow in RC, by a special use permit, the opportunity to put a multifamily. So the absence of you not taking it out of the PUD, I can only read what is here, and because you went to all the trouble to list every other variance to code, and it may be that you actually drew the intent yourself with the PUD, but it's not evident in the document to me, so I'm gonna... And Brad's comment was specific in here also that said you were not limiting the use pursuant to the code, so... Don't like the architecture, and think that you should try to...
Well, I don't, I agree with both the speakers about the architecture, but, and I agree with what Supervisor Shirk said, you know, that's in the eye of the beholder, and it's not precluded. And frankly, you know, when I first heard of this project, I would've followed right down Steve Hartman's analysis. But when I start looking at the documents and looking at what's going on, to do anything other than uphold the Planning Commission is to deny a landowner the right that they have under the development agreements, under the documents for this planned unit development. They've got it. I mean, and so, I know, you know, we've had this before. I know Mr. Brenneman's back there, you know, talking about, you know, developments in historic district, you know? There comes a time when, when, you know, as much as you may, or I may, want to say, "Hey, I don't think it fits, it's not my call, because I'm not the landowner." And so, you know, I don't see it as being, I don't see this as being precluded as a special use under the documents that we've been provided. I just don't. And I've tried every which way I can to get to there tonight, but I can't. Okay. So we will, before we take a motion, I wanna make sure that the record is complete, that we have Mrs. Schellenberger handed out some documents. Do you have a copy of those?
We returned them.
Well, I think I need a copy of those for the record.
We'll get one back, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. So that'll be included in the record, but is not accepted. Okay. All right. We'll take a motion, and we'll see where we go. Go, Ward Four.
Two.
Two.
One.
No.
One. Wow.
Keep going, you got one more choice.
Right. And this is tough. So I move to deny the appeal and uphold the Planning Commission's approval of the special use permit, SUP 15-077, to allow multifamily apartments in a retail-commercial zoning district on property zone retail-commercial planned unit development located at GS Richards Boulevard and Country Club Drive, APN 007-461-22 and 007-461-23, based on the findings and subject to the conditions of approval outlined in the staff report.
There's a motion, is there a second? There's a motion, a second on a motion discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, is there a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose nay? Okay, Planning Commission's decision is upheld, five-zero. All right. We'll now conclude this matter, and we'll go to concluding public comment. Any concluding public comment? Anybody? Okay, I don't see, I don't see any concluding public comment. I don't wanna miss anybody here. All right, then, is there anything else to come before the board? Unless there's an objection, we're adjourned.